It is March 17th, 6:30 PM. We are in the high school large group lecture. Meeting notices were sent to members of the press, members of the school board, and were posted on the front doors and door in the vestibules of district school buildings. This is a meeting of the board.
Cundy here, Hanson?
Here. Recognizing our admin team, we have Dr. Larson, Dr. Mashad, Dr. Hughes, Mr. Munir, Mr. Dobner, Mrs. Dodd, Mrs. Horvath, Mr. Cady. And visitors, sign in, please sign in on the signup sheet at the rear of the room. And now is the time for open forum. This is an opportunity to speak to agenda items or things that you would like to see on a future agenda. Please recall that your time in front of the mic is three minutes. Starting with Mrs. Miriam Barna.
Good evening. Carrie Flack, Larson, Wisconsin, Winnie County parent. It recently has come to my attention and other Winnie County parents, the placement of the LGBTQIA+ flags have been displayed in some classrooms. Why has this been done? The inclusivity of all of our children should be questioned. Perhaps Winnie County Wolves flag or a Wisconsin flag may be more appropriate. We are all together, not isolating one group that could be felt they have more recognition than others, and isolating other children who might not, might agree with the same ideology. We are all Americans, Wisconsinites, and Winnie County Wolves, without splitting us into groups with one being validated over the other. Thank you.
Laura Ackman. Laura Ackman, Moms for Liberty. In January, I did speak to the board here and asked you about the new assessment scores and how inflated they are over the 2023 school year, and specifically asked the board to come back and advise how they were going to communicate to parents so that they would fully understand that the reading is 15% higher and the math scores are 16% higher even though the curriculum and nothing else had changed. So we do know that DPI, and it is a DPI issue, I'm not blaming the board, but I don't think we should not allow parents to fully understand the gravity of what the situation is. DPI reduced the cut scores, which has artificially inflated the scores for math and reading across Wisconsin, and it is not a transparent thing to parents. And I don't want parents to think that miraculously all of a sudden their kids are out of the woods and are reading or performing math at a higher level when in fact they're not. So I would ask this board to figure out a way to come back and respond to the people that are here on a regular basis or online and help us understand how you're going to communicate this. Thank you.
Adam Arons.
Good evening. Just had a few things to talk about. And first to our President Trump's, a few of his executive orders. One that he did on February 5th was called Keeping Men Out of Women's Sports. And Section 3 Roman numeral 2 says, "Take all appropriate action to effectively protect all female athletic opportunities and all female locker rooms, and thereby provide the equal opportunity guaranteed by Title IX of the Education Amendments Act of 1972." The reason I bring that up is because we all know like WIAA made it so only biological, and you can be in your, you know, each sport, biological female can only be, biological male cannot be in there. However, that's where it ends. It doesn't go to protecting them in locker rooms or bathrooms. So I'm just asking the Winnie County School Board to go a little further and protect our girls in their private spaces. Obviously, you have an administration that would also support you on that at the presidential level. Also, there was another one, January 29th came out called Ending Radical Indoctrination in K-12 schooling. And it goes as said forth, says, "The Attorney General shall coordinate with state attorneys general and local district attorneys in their efforts to enforce the law and file appropriate actions against K-12 teachers and school officials who violate the law by sexually exploiting minors, unlawfully practicing medicine by offering diagnosis and treatment without the requisite license, or otherwise unlawfully facilitating the social transition of a minor student." And I'm going to go to Policy 2240 from the Winnie County School District, which says, "Controversial issues in the classroom policy. Controversial issue is a topic on which opposing points of view have been promulgated, promulgated by responsible opinion and are likely to arouse both support and opposition in the community. The board will permit the introduction and proper educational use of controversial issues provided that the use in the instructional program is related to the instructional goals of the course of study and the level of maturity of the students. Does not tend to indoctrinate or persuade students to a particular point of view. Encourage open minors as conducted in a spirit of scholarly inquiry. Does not cause a substantial disruption in the school environment." I would say, obviously putting the flags up has violated many of those. I've had people reach out to me, I've had students reach out to me that have taken pictures on their own accord, had nothing to do with anything I did or anyone else. They saw it and took pictures. I mean, that's a disruption, right? So I'm asking you to follow your own policies. Thank you.
I just want to clarify, no, you're, Dr. Mashad and Dan, have you noticed any disruption throughout the school with regard to these? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Katie Calwards.
Good evening. Oh, can you hear me? Katie Calwards, I live in the village of Winnie County. Recently, I was on Facebook and I came across a post that said, "Every classroom should have an American flag." There was also one that said how all schools should say the Pledge of Allegiance every day. I was so happy to make a comment and say that my children's school does have flags in their classrooms, and how I love that we recite the Pledge of Allegiance every morning, just like we did when I was in school. In fact, my oldest got to say it in the office with Mr. M. for the whole school to hear on the morning announcements just a few weeks ago. She was so proud of herself and we were super proud of her too. I also love that we open our school board meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. It brings such a sense of unity, and that's the wonderful thing about our American flag. It brings us all together and represents all of us, not leaving anyone out. Other flags may cause division. What I don't understand is why we feel that it is appropriate to have a flag in school that represents the sexual orientation of minor children, no matter what that orientation is. This flag only represents some, not all, causing a divide that does not need to be there. At the end of the day, no other flag belongs in our classrooms other than the American flag. We are all Americans and that flag already represents all of us. Thank you.
Mark Haley.
You know, I never thought I'd have to get involved in politics. It's a dirty business. But I remember when I attended school board meetings in Winnie County back in '78 and '79. A lot of the members here put Mr. Allen, Colonel Ice, and the rest of those who served on the school board back then to shame. This school, as decided by a majority, the school... Who cut my mic?
I don't think, yeah, we can hear you.
This school board must reopen itself to good teachers, the parents, and the members of this community. It ought to educate right now, as a national trend, and this school is following it too. Indoctrination, not education, seems to be the priority. You know, I, until there's rule against child... You know, I, until there's rule against Title IX and this gender identity nonsense, I had respect for the school board. In fact, I had the privilege to go to be classmates with a couple of these members. I used to respect them. I can no longer do that. When you put student safety above federal pennies, then you have crossed the line. Does the school board even consider how much it would cost in amount to defend and pay out in sexual abuse cases rather than giving in for a few pair of pennies? It would be a lot more than that, and I'll be behind the whole way. And you cannot hide under the school this excuse. What we thought could happen, what we never thought could happen here, you're not going to stand behind that. Thank you.
All right, that is the end of the open forum. We will move into open session. For consent agenda, I would make a motion to pull out the minutes from March 3rd and vote on those separately.
I move to approve consent agenda items sub B through sub I.
Second.
Motion by Verich, second by Keller, to approve consent agenda B through I. Any questions, comments? Rule call, please.
Stelsner.
Aye.
Verich.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Ackman.
Aye.
Condi, aye.
Hanson.
Aye. And a motion for the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Condi, second by Verich, to approve March 3rd regular school board meeting minutes. Rule call, please.
Verich.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Ackman.
Aye.
Condi, aye. Stelsner. Hanson.
Upstein. All right, and moving on, we have the high school sale team that is going to present to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and color.
Hi, thank you for, thank you for having us. That felt good, okay. Thank you for having us. We are excited to share kind of what our growth and what our progress has been. So just to kind of direct your attention to our mantra, which honestly, it took a little bit to condense our vision just into a few words, but this has ultimately been our mantra since starting in 2023 with the Sale Academy program. And all of us know and recognize how many amazing things our school district has going on when it comes to graduation rates, and our two to four-year students are prepared for life and later education with fewer remedial classes necessary, ACT scores are good, APC, our AP scores are good. But we also recognize that if our students are going to grow, we need to also. So our, you can kind of see the acronym up there of what Sale stands for. It was kind of a, an introduction to us from the OSOW program when it comes to a tiered level of professional development. And the big thing I would kind of point out about the Sale is this, the shared leadership when it comes to promoting growth. So Suzy, I'll tell us a little more about that.
So we're really excited to come and talk to you about Sale today because there seems to be this misconception that the Sale is like a prescribed curriculum or program, and it's really not that at all. Really what it is, is an opportunity for us to learn and grow, and then help the other staff in the building learn and grow, and then therefore help the students grow. And if you can see on the screen or board, if you want to see on your handout, we are one of 69 teams participating in Sale this year in eight of 440 individuals. Since June of 2023, we've been able to go six times for professional learning, and we are just starting our sixth cycle. So each time we go for professional learning, we work on a cycle, a plan, do, study, act cycle. We work on it, we get feedback from the other teachers, take that feedback back to our next professional learning and grow and build on that.
All right, so our areas of focus, we started this journey, like they said, in June of 2023. When we began with the meetings, we looked at data, specifically, we were looking at the state report card, and we came back to the student growth. We know that our students achieve at high levels, but we knew that we could improve in the area of growth. And so when we were talking about that and we were brainstorming, okay, how do we tackle and help support our students in the area of growth, we realized we also needed to grow within our own development. And so that's why you see we have not just student growth, how do we support our students, but how do we also support our staff in their learning to help support our students? So we looked at areas and we looked at six different areas which were going on within, some were already going on within the district. The first one would be the curriculum work, which was being supported by the coaches like myself and our director of learning. The educator effectiveness was an aspect that our administrators were actually working on, and the rapid cycle feedback. But there were other areas that we were already doing well and we wanted to continue down that path, and that was focus time. We, the district uses focus time in various ways, but we wanted to make sure that it was being used efficiently to make sure that kids were getting the tier two support that they needed. And so we implemented the use of efficiency to ensure that students were getting those needs met. The bottom three kind of go together. We implemented the idea of collaboration time. Teachers were already collaborating within their districts, or sorry, within their departments. But collaborate, collaboration time allowed the teachers to collaborate cross-curricular. And during that, with feedback from the staff, we created protocol for student data meetings as well as student support teams. And even the protocol from those student support teams are being utilized to create forms within Edge Climber that will also be used across the district.
So here are a few of our accomplishments to this point. We're growing collective efficacy among staff, utilizing efficiency to help make the intervention times more focused and efficient. We've developed this collaboration time, leading to faster response time to intervene with and support students in a collaborative manner, and that is both behavioral and academic. And we streamline procedures for data in student meetings. Feel we've also been able to clarify and make more concise common language, so when we're discussing certain things, such as formative assessment, we all know we're speaking of the same thing. And here is some staff feedback affirming those points. So these are several comments we, we collected from staff feedback. To highlight a few, we are student-focused and solution-oriented, seeing different approaches of formative assessments and learning new areas, ideas, and support. And talking about the students together gives a more complete picture of what the child needs to be successful. As you read these, notice themes of collaborative and shared learning, along with a focus on student-centered improvement. So this brings us back to our original areas of focus, that was being student growth and our growth. And these have been our laser focus from the start of the 20 through 24 school year, and we will continue to reflect upon and refine these practices going forward. Thank you.
Time for questions? Okay. When you determine the goal or what you're going to work, I am, I'm understanding that you have different goals throughout the year, correct?
Correct.
Do you get input from the other teachers, what they want? Input from them as to what they would like to see you, I guess, work on is what I'm going to say.
Yes, so we have an overall theory of action, and that's really tying to this idea of growth among students. So as mentioned, those hundred-day plans, as we implement them, we base the next one off of the feedback we're getting off from staff. And then, yeah, within each one, we're definitely utilizing that data to, to help us refine and, and make our revisions.
Thank you.
I've had concerns about particularly our high school drops in, in scores, ACT, report card, and then what Mrs. Ackman brought up, this whole number DPI pulled with, for lack of a better word, dumbing down the standards. How are you addressing that through Sale? And are you seeing, are you, how are you measuring it? And I know that can take more than six months to a year, but how are you addressing that?
When you look at the numbers, I think the first thing to identify is looking at the percentile of achievement. We're still up at that, above the 89th percentile achievement. And those other aspects, I think that definitely is tied into part of the climate and culture, looking at the importance of ACT. So right now, our focus with this is going through what are best practices, the idea of collaboration, understanding where the students at in that growth model, and then some of these other aspects, having discussions upon, what are those other elements, those tangible things that we can try to, to look at and prove.
For those of them here, as well as those listening on, can you just give us an indication? And I've got a follow-up question to this. What grade levels that you're really focusing on?
This is all of, let's say, when you think about our student teams, and even if I think about our focus, if we look this Friday, this Friday, our P, our professional development, a big focus is going to be on that transition from eighth grade into high school. So a big focus this Friday is going to be looking at what are those elements that we can put in place to help students with that transition? Are there things we need to build upon at the middle school level and at the freshman level? And that those students end up being a big focus when we think about our student meetings. But as far as within practice, within our data, I would say it's, it's at all levels.
And you answered my follow-up question because that was exactly what it was going to be, is transitioning from eighth grade into high school. Thank you.
Could you just give us a little better timeline of, so you say like a hundred-day plan or a hundred-day goal is kind of what we've heard? With 180 days in the school year, my mind's like, so one a year? And could you just clarify that, please?
Well.
So essentially, three per year, full year.
Correct, so this would be our second full school year in it, and we're on our sixth hundred-day.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you so much for your time and explanation.
All right, thank you.
Cell phone data. Please thank Mrs. Bus for the new format. Any questions regarding that?
I just have, just a comment, and I agree more so with you, Donna, that we do need to revisit that policy at some point. The numbers aren't getting any better. Looks like it's getting a little more robust at the middle school now, so, but say we keep monitoring and approach later.
I have it down for July to review.
Okay, good. We'll have a full year of data then. Okay. And policies.
Okay, we have the policies that are in your packet in the policy committee. As you've been hearing, we have been meeting at our 5:30 time period prior till each board meeting, and then we bring them to the following board meeting for approval. Tonight, Policy 5113, Open Enrollment Programs Inter-District. The policy is revised to incorporate verbiage regarding requirements to view a special education student's IEP to determine both space and service availability. Adoption of this is recommended, and because this involves handling open enrollment applications, strongly recommended to improve a district's ability to successfully defend a decision to deny open enrollment. Policy 5113, Open Enrollment Program 8-3. Any questions? 8-4. You see the new language that's in the green color? 8-5. 8-5, as we go through these policies each time, as I've indicated with our committee, we like to make sure we point out, under number C, a decisional criteria for non-resident applications. Number two, whether an applicant for a pre-kindergarten, four-year-old kindergarten, early childhood, or schooled-operated daycare program resides in a district which offers the program for which application is made. And under number three, whether the non-resident student is currently under an order of expulsion for any reasons, or has been expelled for any school district within the current school year, or the two-year preceding school years, but the period of expulsion has ended, or is pending any disciplinary proceeding based on any of the following activities. Any further question? And of course, you are realizing each time, I think it was probably two or three meetings ago where we had approved our regular ed and our special ed space in accordingly to the grade levels and buildings. 8-6. As well, in the very last paragraph, where it states, "Open enrollment of a student as a virtual charter school may also be terminated if on three occasions during accounting any days excused by a student's parents up to a maximum, excuse me, of 10 school days per year. And after each occurrence, the virtual charter school notified the student's parents. After the third incident, the virtual charter school program shall notify the board of non-resident students failure to participate in program. The board may terminate the student's open enrollment." 8-7. Any questions? Next policy, Policy 5512, Use of Tobacco and Nicotine by Students. This is a revision. The policy revisions are offered in consultation with representatives from the American Lung Association to provide options for incorporating smoky, smoking cessation programs into the student intervention process as opposed to strictly punitive measures. Also added is a more descriptive policy position to promote respect for Native American ceremonial tobacco usage. Policy 5512, 8-9. If you go three-quarters, almost all the way to the end of the policy, where it starts out to response to policy violations, the new language that's indicated there. In all of the areas here on 8, 9, with the new language where there could potentially be a checkmark, we are not recommending any checkmarks within those prospective areas. Any further question on 8-9? 8-10 as well. On the very top of the policy where it states policy-specific definitions, the term anytime means during normal school and non-school hours, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Three-quarters of the way down the policy, you'll see some new language as well. That particular new language, potentially, we could put a checkmark there, we have recommended to not check that particular area. Any further questions on that page? Policy 6231, Budget Implementation, this as well as a revision. This policy is revised to clarify language regarding fund balance expenditures consistent with current practices. Policy 6231, Budget Implamation. Policy sixty-two thirty-one, budget implementation. As you go through the policy, any questions?
Uh, I did, Mark.
Okay.
So the first paragraph, we go with the district administrator, he, she, consult with the director of business services. It says may consult with the director of business services. I'm just wondering, should we have a checks and balance there, especially if it's a decision to buy something or spend some amount of money? That's out of the uh expertise of the administrator?
I mean, if you read that further, uh Dean. It indicates when major purchases are considered and shall keep the board informed as to problems or concerns as the budget is being implemented. I do agree with your your concern. I believe, correct me Peggy if I'm wrong, we do have a policy that has a certain dollar level that if it goes in beyond that, they have to come back to the board.
Yeah.
For approval.
Yeah, wasn't it five or ten thousand?
It's twenty thousand?
Twenty.
It's twenty thousand, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I would just add, Dean, just for clarification, those are decisions once the budget has been adopted. So in some regards, there already are some parameters put in place because sh- sh- the administrator would have to be working within the budget. So I think that's where you got your safeguards.
Okay.
You okay with that, Dean?
Yep.
Any further questions? Policy sixty-two thirty-five, fund balance, this is a revision as well. This policy is updated to include additional rationale and options for a district's management and fund balance. Business manager recommends neither option one or number two. As we're going through this policy on eight thirteen, you can see where there's a quite a bit of new language. Three-quarters of the way down is actually where the new language starts for this policy. Any questions on eight thirteen?
Uh, Mark.
Yeah.
Is this where you like to keep twenty percent?
That's on the next page and I'll further explain that, okay?
Oh, okay.
If you don't mind.
Nope.
On eight fourteen. This is where Dean's question is, as we go through the new language where it states optional number one, the fund balance shall not fall below a certain percentage of the preceding year's fund ten expenditures. And or option two, the target fund balance range for maintaining the district's financial stability is a certain percentage of the preceding year's fund ten expenditures. If many of you remember back um years ago, and I'm not gonna pick on any universities or so, but there was some questions as far as actual dollars being held in fund balances that were greater than wh- what an individual or a a number of individuals within um that area had thought. Each of us here on the board potentially probably has an idea where they'd like to see us if we're, we're being, you know, respectful and responsible for our funds here in the district to determine in our own thoughts where we'd like to see our fund, fund ten balance. And of course, it's always been kind of a a pet peeve or a baby of mine to like and look at our twenty-some-odd-million-dollar budget and then figure a certain percentage of that to keep in fund balance. That is what that's asking there. And we as a district don't specifically put in percentages there. But as a guide, I would think most of us like to keep an idea of of a percentage of our total budget in mind for our fund ten balance.
Well, and the balance, the fund ten balance is very fluid too, so it's kind of hard to keep a a definite percentage um of that fund balance.
Right, thank you, as it, as sometimes we call it like a flow-through of of balance. As we go through the policy, um just starting the policy after your question, Dean, where we see fund balances will be reported in the categories established by the government accounting standards, Board Statement fifty-four, and in consultation with district auditors and the business manager, we will put a check there. The board will impose constraints on any funds placed in the committed and assigned classifications through consultation with the district's auditor. And we will put a checkmark there, business manager. The applicable categories for fund balances designations are as such, and you can see them listed in the new language. Any further questions on that page? We've got one other, uh, three-quarters of the way down. The board discourages the maintenance of unassigned fund balances. And I do not have it indicated that we put a checkmark in there. Any further questions on eight fourteen? Policy seventy-four ten, maintenance. Eight fifteen. Any questions there at all? Policy seventy-four thirty, safety standards. This policy has been revised to clarify what information is required to be reported to the board. This particular policy, um, we did have a question that came up where um the question was in the second paragraph where it indicates and states, the district administrator shall be responsible for the maintenance of standards in the facilities to prevent accidents and to minimize their consequences. The district administrator shall designate an employee who shall conduct periodic audits of health and safety conditions within the facilities of the district in accordance with the federal OSHA standards adopted by the state and take appropriate action on any violations discovered during such audits. Reports of violations and remediation actions shall be provided to the district administrator who shall keep the board informed of significant issues. The question arose within that area, of course, we have our director and our manager of our grounds and facilities, uh, Mr. Steve Katie uh works along with Peggy, not specifically all on Peggy's shoulder, um, together with their uh commitment and working together for safety. That's kind of a dual working relationship so that uh we have people in place for those particular reasons. Any further questions on eight sixteen? Policy seventy-four forty, facility security, the revisions to this policy clarify law enforcement contact and remove optional language. Eight seventeen. Eight eighteen. There's one area on on eight eighteen I want to point out, and that is the very second paragraph where it says, failure to follow the requirements above when entering or remaining in school facilities may be subjected to a fine not exceeding one thousand dollars in circumstances tending to provoke a disturbance of the peace, may be fined not more than ten thousand dollars or imprisoned not more than ninety days. And again, anytime there's time periods in dollar amounts within policies, I do appreciate pointing them out.
Mark, I assume that's in got, it it's that, like, those fines are related to like a a Wisconsin law or local ordinance and?
That's what I was gonna ask.
I would say that if it's a, it's a law and local ordinance together, it could be both.
Okay. I mean, I just want to clarify, it's not the school district issuing these fines.
Right.
It's a, it's a.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Right, it's not the school, right, it's not the school district, right. Local law enforcement enforcing laws and statutes. Okay, any other questions with any of the policies that were presented? Otherwise, the recommendation from the committee is for approval. And if we could have these policies in one motion for approval, that would be appreciated.
I move to approve policy number fifty-one thirteen, open enrollment program. Uh, fifty-five twelve, use of tobacco and nicotine by students, sixty-two thirty-one, budget implementation, sixty-two thirty-five, fund balance, seventy-four ten, maintenance, seventy-four thirty, safety standards, seventy-four forty, uh, facility security.
I have a second.
Okay, motion by Verich, second by Ackman to approve those policies as presented. Roll call, please.
Keller.
Aye.
Ackman. Condi, I, Stelsner.
Aye.
Verich.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. Uh, admin reports, um, any questions on what was presented in the packet or any additions from administration? Questions from the board? And board reports, um, any communications?
I handed out the invitation for the academic awards, each of you got your invitation to that. Other than that, I have no communication as any letter or anything.
Okay, thank you. And committee reports, human resources and finance?
Nothing for tonight, we meet on April fourth. Uh, Monica, our business manager, is just keeping us up to speed with the whole budget process.
Okay, thank you, and marketing and public relations?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, and policy?
We did meet tonight prior till this regular meeting and we will have a packet uh to bring forward for the next meeting for approval. And at this time, with the packet that will be going through on April seventh, that uh will bring us up to speed as far as any revisions or new policies at this time.
Thank you. And with that, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Some of.
Second.
Motion by Keller, second by Stelsner to move into executive session under statute nineteen point eight-five to approve executive session minutes from March third. And Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five sub one, sub C, to discuss employee retention, including confidential data related to employment matters, performance, and strategies for improving retention within the district. The board will move into open session and may take action on items discussed in closed session. Roll call, please.
Ackman.
Aye.
Condi, I, Stelsner.
Aye.
Verich.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.